Good evening, everyone. We will call the Monday, March 2, 2015 City Council Meeting to Order, and we'll have the roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene.
Scott, Drew, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Estes, Nordstrom, Roberts, Wyeth, and Bach, Laurenti. We have quorum.
Thank you. We'll now have our invocation delivered by Pastor Brent Woodard of the Bible Christian Church. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Shall we bow our heads? Father in heaven, thank you for the wonderful privilege to live in a wonderful place. We pray tonight that these men and ladies will receive wisdom for the decisions that they must make. And then, Lord, we pray that our discourse and discussion will be such that even our children will be proud. Give each one of them wisdom, and may the matters of our city be handled well in the sight of God. We pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
We are now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda by any councilmembers present? We have motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have our Veteran of the Month, so if Tech Sergeant Ron Twining from Ellsworth could come down along with our Ward II City Councilmembers Richie Nordstrom and Steel Laurenti. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the February 2015 Veteran of the Month recognition to Ron Twining. Technical Sergeant Ron Twining is a primary instructor for the Airman Leadership School at Ellsworth. As a member of the ALS staff, he is responsible for helping train up to 212 future supervisors and non-commissioned officers annually in areas of leadership, management, communication, and profession of arms.
Sergeant Twining was born and raised in Muskegon, Michigan, and graduated from high school in 1996. In April 2000, he joined the United States Air Force. After graduating from basic training, Twining received aerospace propulsion training at Shepard Air Force Base, Texas. After four months of training, Twining reported to Dover Air Force Base, Delaware, to work as a jet engine apprentice on the C-5 Galaxy for the 436 airlift wing. In 2005, Twining received orders to Ellsworth Air Force Base, South Dakota. He worked on the B-1 aircraft while assigned to the ISO chrono inspection section as Assistant Non-Commissioned Officer in Charge of Jets. In 2007, Twining became the 28th Maintenance Squadron's Resource Advisor, responsible for $1.38 million in an annual budget and the security and readiness of over 400 members. Once Twining completed his tour as Resource Advisor, he reported to the Jet Engine Intermediate Maintenance Sections as Officer in Charge of Propulsion Support. After only one year, Twining was promoted to NCOIC of the JEIM. He was in charge of 30 airmen in the two-level GE F-101 engine line, where he directly contributed to Operation Odyssey Dawn, helping to launch the first-ever B-1 combat sortie launched from the Continental United States. Twining assumed his current position in the Airman Leadership School in March 2011.
Twining is a steward of education and has earned two Community College of Air Force Associates degrees: Aviation Military Technology in 2010, and Instructor of Technology and Military Science in 2013. Due to his GPA and outstanding reputation as a student, he was awarded the Pittsburgher Award, a grant for continued education from the Air Force Association. Recently, Twining was awarded to the Community College of Air Force Instructor Certification Level 2 for his ongoing extensive developing training, education, and qualifications required to teach a CCAF collegiate course. This certification formally acknowledges his practical teaching experiences. In addition, he is currently three classes away from receiving his bachelor's degree through National American University.
Twining is also committed to Douglas School District, Francis Case Elementary School Book Fair, and provides 48-plus hours to selling books during eight parent-teacher conferences over the last four years. His dedication to the district and school enabled them to raise over $2,800. A portion of the money earned during each school book fair is given directly back to Francis Case Elementary and enables the purchase of learning tools for students. The Francis Case Douglas School District book fairs would not be successful without dedicated individuals like Twining. Not only is Twining a steward of education, but he is a die-hard volunteer of the Central Hockey League and Brant City Rush Hockey Team. He provided logistic support to the Brant Rush as an off-ice official. He controlled stats for 165 session games and 30 playoff games, totaling 600-plus hours. Twining directed plus-minus, about plus-or-minus time for five seasons and also ensured players were properly recognized for their contributions to the team. As appointed goal judge for games and season playoffs, he determined whether or not a player scored a goal and advised the referee with his decision. He also contributed to the team in an administrative role by ensuring accurate documentation of the team's wins and losses. The Rush has a large impact on the community, and Twining is a catalyst for their cause. In 2014, Twining was elected as Vice President of the Air Force Association, Chapter 951, and is a key player in organizing the upcoming AFSA Division Convention taking place in Dedwood, South Dakota, April of this year. He also volunteers at BFW by serving food to veterans and their families. Twining is happily married to Starlet, and together they have two children, Wyatt and Mandala. He enjoys reading, working out, and spending time with his family. Technical Sergeant Twining has been serving our country for 15 years with dedication and sacrifice. He's an example of service, and he's deserving of his honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, Sergeant Twining, and that's only Book One.
I am a professional military education instructor. I speak without a microphone. Thank you all. Thank you, Sir McCormick, for putting me in for this award. And thank you for recognizing vets each month, because there's not a whole lot of recognition. So, thank you. Not just for me, from everybody. Every now and then, we like to see this stuff. I know I do. I appreciate it. So, thank you, sir. And, well, that's all I really have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's a privilege to have this fine crew from our Parks and Recreation Department here tonight. We have received, as a community, national recognition, thanks to the leadership of this fine crew and to the dedication of all the people that have worked in Parks and Recreation over the years to make our Parks Department one of the finest in the country. And now to talk about this further is Jeff Beegler, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much. It's quite an honor to be featured in a publication that's been in existence for 50 years and goes out to every Parks and Recreation organization, every leisure company, community groups, conservation groups, wellness organizations. And we have to thank the two of our members, Kristy Lince and Alex DeSmet, who worked with Danielle Taylor, the Executive Editor of Parks and Recreation Magazine. This is the actual magazine in which our article was featured. The article highlights some of the facilities, programs, and public-private partnerships that have helped make Rapid City Parks and Recreation Department one of the truly outstanding organizations and the envy of many other communities in the country. Our park system is what it is because of the importance that the community and its elected officials have placed upon quality-of-life issues for its residents, its businesses, and its visitors. And we could not do what we do without the unwavering and amazing support of the mayor, city council, Parks and Recreation Board, and all of our other city departments and all the members of the Rapid City community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we proceed further, I would like to take a moment to initiate a moment of silence for a longtime member of the Rapid City Fire Department, Pat McGinnis, who served our community with distinction from 1963 to 1995. And we keep his family in our thoughts and prayers. Let's do a full minute of silence, please. Thank you. We are now on to general public comment. I have one speaker request form under General Public Comment, and we will go to Jerry Munson. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jerry Munson from Rapid City. I'm here tonight because of some campaign violations that I cannot overlook. This first slide is an email to your city attorney regarding a Facebook page from the Yes Folks that offers a chance to win prizes for Murphy's, AJ's, et cetera. South Dakota Bribery Statute 121615 says that's illegal. The second slide is an email from your finance officer to the finance group and the department directors that gives them a "Vote Yes" toolkit. It was sent on a city computer on city time to employees reading it on city time. The third slide is examples of those tools. The fourth slide, I just went past it, but the fifth slide, same thing, it's just enlarged, showing the address of the people that filed the report, the campaign report of the Civic Center Expansion Group, as the people's building, the Civic Center address. The sixth slide is a bathroom in the Civic Center. Seventh slide is by the theater. Eighth slide is a sign in the hallway. The ninth slide is Alderwoman Doyle and friends at the stairs by the front door of the polling place. The tenth slide is the bobblehead at the ballot box. Eleventh slide is a close-up of showing other people were there. You can see them in the windows. Twelfth slide is Mrs. Doyle at the ballot box. Thirteenth slide is the friend at the ballot box. Fourteenth slide is State Statute SDCL 12183 regarding electioneering. And I quote, "Electioneering is prohibited near a polling place. No person may, within 100 feet from any entrance leading into a polling place, use any communication in a manner which repeatedly distracts, interrupts, or intimidates any voter or display campaign posters, signs, or other campaign materials or by like means solicit any votes for or against any position on a question submitted. A violation is a Class II misdemeanor and is a serious matter that is decided in a formal setting." Unquote. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not here to ask that anyone be prosecuted. I do, however, hereby respectfully request that at this time someone make a motion and a second to place this item on tonight's agenda for further consideration, and with a roll call vote, so the public may know each alderman's response. In justification, I can only say that it is the opinion of many citizens that a clean, unstained voting process is the foundation of our great country, and we must resolve to never let this happen again. Thank you.
Additional public comment? Or council lights? We will now move on to opening public comment. Oh, we do have one. We'll go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
I would like to add an item to the agenda, as per Jerry Munson's request. Thank you.
Okay, we will add this item to... Tell you what, why don't we... If it's all right, we had a request earlier from Dr. Lidle on item 51, since he and another individual needed to leave. If it's all right with the council, we will move item 49 and this item. We'll call it item 56. And we'll move it to after the bill list. We shouldn't have a too lengthy of agenda tonight, so we'll have plenty of time for discussion. Is everyone okay with that, moving? Okay. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And so, item 49 has been moved after item 55, and item 56 will be after item 49, if that makes sense. So, this item has been added to the agenda. We do not have any other public comment items under General Public Comments. So, we will now move to opening public comment, items 4 through 47. Items 4 through 47. I do not have any speaker request forms on items 4 through 47. Have I missed anyone? Last call. Public comment is now closed on items 4 through 47. And any councilmembers like to remove items 4 through 47, any of those for separate consideration? We have a motion to approve. Motion by Estes, and you weren't hitting your light, were you? No. And a second by Richie Nordstrom. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Very good. So, we are now on public comment for item 48, and we'll do the public comment for item 49 separately when we get to that item. We have no public comment items for... A request for item 48. Did I miss anyone? Item 48, seeing none. Public comment is now closed. We're now on item number 48, and we'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott to read this into the record for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 48 is a request by... Sorry. Item number 49?
48.
Item number 48 is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Lisa R. Schneider, on behalf of the estate of Patricia Burgland, for the preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at 5455 Burgland Road. And I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second by Lewis to approve item 48 with stipulations. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 49 has been moved to the end of the agenda. We are now on consent items 50 through 52, and we will open public comment. We do have two speaker request forms on item 51, and we'll go to Dr. Larry Lidle first. Item 51. And while he's coming up, item 51 is Resolution on Loving Assessment for Cleanup of Miscellaneous Property.
Good evening, and thank you, Council, for taking the time to hear this. You know I wouldn't be here if I thought it was just that the property that I am the general manager of on the corner of Fifth Street and St. James Street has an assessment of $332 concerning weed control. I wouldn't be here if I thought that assessment was just. I value your time, and I know that it's important that it be fair for everybody concerned. The story on that property is last spring, when it was wet, the weeds... Our lawnmower disappeared. I have a manager who is not here tonight on that property. The lawnmower disappeared. He called me and said, "Can I get another lawnmower?" In a week, the weeds on the front got about that high dandelions, and some of those weeds grow pretty fast. I said, "You can take my mower." I loaned me my personal mower, and he went over there, mowed the weeds. It's mostly weeds on that shale hill. For those of you that don't know that particular territory, the corner of Fifth Street and St. James is right on a shale hill, right next to abandoned property that I think is currently owned by Habitat by Humanity. And on the other side, to the west side, is another apartment building. To keep that hill from sliding several years ago, I constructed a redwood fence. And that redwood fence is like 2/3 or 1/3 in some places, 2/3 in other places, under shale because it's sliding down the hill. We intentionally leave all growth on both sides of that redwood fence. It's in behind. Nobody can see it. And when we mowed the weeds on the front side, or the grass, if you call it that, two days later, there was a crew in there removing all the weeds on the hillside that we leave the weeds on to keep the hill from sliding. When I addressed this at the department level, I said, "Why didn't you issue a yellow tag on the property to the north and on the property to the west? Those still have weeds there," and no yellow tag was issued. So, the answer was, "They have..." I'm not sure what... Apparently, the Habitat Humanity only has to clean up the weeds within a certain distance of the road. It appears to me that the property that I'm talking about was somehow the other regulated out of the weed control. When I have now... My maintenance manager is here, Brian Davis. He will tell you that the property was mowed, and two days later, they sent a crew in there and moved the weeds on the hillside. Brian? Brian?
For a next speaker request form, Brian Davis, also on item 51. Good evening, Brian.
Hi, thank you. I do know that I delivered the mower to his, his actual maintenance, or his manager. I picked up the mower the next day after the yard had been done, and figured, okay, well, everything's good. Well, the next day, I wasn't there. The next day after that, I was and was told that the city had already brought in some people and, and done things. Well, we, I, I like to say, I, we were keeping this part of the, part of the hill so it doesn't slide. I mean, the rest of the yard was taken care of as per the request of the, the little yellow ticket. And I just, I, I just think that somebody jumped the gun and come and, come and done something after it was already taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speaker request forms on items 50 through 54? Items 50 through 54? Seeing none, public comment, public hearing is now closed. We are now on consent public hearing items 50 through 52. Any council members like to remove any items for separate consideration? Or a motion? Alderman Jerry Wright?
On that item 51, is Jeff here?
Why don't you offer a motion to approve 50 through 52 with the exception of 51?
I'll make most approve 50 through 54 with the exception of 51. Thank you.
Fifty through 52. We have a motion by Wright and a second by Laurenti to approve items 50 through 52 with the exception of 51. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 51. Amanda, would you read this into the record for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 51 is a resolution number 2015008B, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We do not have a motion. We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
I'd like to hear from our department on this particular issue.
We'll go to our community resources director, Jeff Barbeer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not familiar with the details on this situation, as I've just met Mr. Lidle and heard his, his side of the story for the first time tonight. You know, we're to the point of assessment now, so this, his $332, and I'm not sure the name of his, the name of his company because his name is not on it, but the $332 at this point would include a $100 late fee, as well as the $42 administrative fee from code enforcement. So what we would have, what the city would have actually spent to pay our contractor would have been $190. So the city did actually spend those funds. This, the codes, the city code says eight inches, so I'm, I'm sure what happened is when, when our ordinance officer went back to take a look, there was still vegetation that was considerably over eight inches. We hired our contractor to come in and take care of it. Now, we would have before and after pictures and stuff in our database that if you wanted to approve the rest of this assessment roll, other than Mr. Lidle's company, and we could, I can certainly get you those pictures to take a look at, or if you'd like to make a compromise to, you know, maybe the $190 that we did spend, and forgive the late fee and the admin fee, something like that. Pauline looks like she wants to chime in on that.
We'll go to our city finance officer, Pauline Sumption. Pauline, you have an opinion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not necessarily an opinion. We do have a resolution that outlines the $100 administration fee to be able to send out the legal notices, to do the legal publications and that type of thing. It's not just a late fee.
Any further discussion? Jerry, you still have the floor. Alderman Wright?
I'm curious if my fellow members would be willing to approve the resolution excluding this, so we can get some information, since we have a petitioner asking for consideration?
Okay. Yielding the floor?
I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Alderman Ron Wyfemack.
I'll make that motion to exclude that item until we can find out further information on it, and then...
Which item number is it? In the... Yes, we have a motion to approve all of the items within item 51 except for item five, and we continue item five to next week's Public Works meeting. Acceptable?
Acceptable.
We have a second, Alderman Wyfemack's motion. Second by Brad Estes. Alderman Wyfemack, you still have the floor if you want it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for Mr. Lidle, and I would, wanted to know how long you owned that property?
I've owned that property for...
Larry, Dr. Lidle, if you could go to the microphone, please.
I have a large voice, but I thought it's got to go on this. I've owned that property since the early 80s, and the property at that time was, two of the buildings were condemned. I spent a large amount of money putting those properties back on the tax roll, and they're now decent rental properties for low-income housing, and they stay full with a waiting list. So, basically, we've taken really good care of the property, and this particular issue kind of stuck, sticks in my craw, that we're trying to control the hill from sliding, and now we get charged for taking the weeds down that is controlling the hill.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Lidle, and I, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your explanation. I think we'll, we'll look into that because I know exactly what you're talking about, and both those hills slide down like that. So, if he's owned it for that long, and, and we haven't had a problem, I know exactly what he's talking about. Right to the west of him, there, there's, there's a field that's been an eyesore for a long time, so maybe we can, maybe we can figure this out this time around and into the future so this doesn't happen again, so, thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Barbeer a question?
You may.
Thank you. Jeff, is it still the, the code enforcement's procedure that they only respond when a complaint has been filed, including like this weed growth?
No. No, in fact, that's not the case. We always respond to complaints, and so those are priority. But if we don't have complaints, then we do what we call proactive enforcement, where the officer will, you know, will be covering his neighborhood and, and looking for violations.
So, when you bring information to Public Works, could you also let us know if there was a complaint filed, or if this was a proactive approach to clearing up this lot by the code enforcement?
Certainly. Who made the complaint always remains anonymous, but whether or not it was a complaint, I can certainly bring that information.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. There is a motion on the floor to approve item 51 with the exception of number five within that item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and item five as part of that motion has been continued to next week's Public Works meeting. We are now on item number 53, and we'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis. This is an ordinance. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 53 is the ordinance, second reading of ordinance 6033, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapsody Municipal Code, rezoning that was described within property as requested by Rent and Associates LLC for DTH LLC for rezoning from medium-density residential to general commercial district for a property generally described as being located at 519 Catherine Avenue. I move approval.
You have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 54.
Item 54 is second reading of ordinance 6034, ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapsody Municipal Code. Rezoning that within described property is requested by the city of Rapid City for rezoning from general agricultural district to low-density residential one for property, property generally described as being located at the line east of the current terminus, southern terminus of Nogga Gulch Road. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have the bill list.
Move.
Normally, I rattle through this real quick, but I want to point out to you, today we went live with our Tyler product for software on phase one, and so the bill list that's attached is actually from the new system, so pay attention to it, please. But the bill list is not changing, so the total is that, which is before you at $5,145,490.36.
We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Nordstrom to approve. I bet you're very glad the numbers matched up.
Yes.
And the checks printed. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item 49, and we'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis to read 49 into the record for us. Item 49.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Item 49 is discussion of the approved November 17, 2014 settlement agreement with the Department of Justice regarding violations of the American Disabilities Act at the Civic Center. I move acknowledgment.
We have a motion to acknowledge by Lewis and a second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing, okay. Alderman Ron Wyfemack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I put this on the legal and finance on Wednesday because there was a lot of confusion on how we arrived at the agreement. I think, for the most part, we can, we can sit here and we can go tit-for-tat on this with the, with the, with the, with our legal counsel or whatever, but I've also come to realize that it's still a matter of opinion, that, I mean, this federal law doesn't require it. It's a, it's a guess that it would have been, we would have ever been sued for anything. And I do want to point out the fact that, because it's been mentioned that people at the Civic Center have not been tentative to people with ADA issues, and that's just not the case. They have been tentative to people with ADA issues. People are not getting shut out of our Civic Center. The Civic Center is not going to get shut down if, if they're, if this project doesn't go through, and that's important for people to know. And the most important thing for me to know is that people at the Civic Center work diligently, very hard to accommodate every person that comes into their Civic Center, whether they're there for ADA, or whether they're, they're completely able to handle or maneuver the, any situation on their own. So, that's very important to know, so, and it's, with that being said, I mean, the building was built in 77. There's never been a major problem or complaint. Mostly what happens is people have parking issues out there that we need to address, which is a simple way to address it, and that's just get it done. Just get it done. I mean, the people, you know, I just got this Department of Justice letter here, and the first thing they talk about is not having accessibility for parking. Parking is easy, it's a fix. It's a simple fix. We get down there and get it going and get it moving on it, but the main, the main reason I brought it forward is to, is when we voted on the agreement, well now, and I guess my question would be, is are we tied to this agreement? And I guess, Mr. Chair, I would give that question to our, our legal counsel to say, as we entered into this voluntary agreement, yea or nay, if it's a nay, are we tied to this agreement? Has the DOJ signed it, and are we tied? Well, I guess I'll ask one question at a time, so, are we tied to this agreement at this point?
We'll go to our city attorney, Joel Landine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, yes, we're tied to the agreement. They have executed the agreement. That was what the press release that you're referring to was attached to the signed agreement today. I mean, if you breached it, they would likely sue us at this point, which, again, puts us back to about the same position we would have been in if we had not entered into the settlement agreement at all. I mean, that was the way it was presented to us, and that's why it was brought forward for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I've never seen anywhere that they either threatened a lawsuit or were going to send us a lawsuit, so I just, I respectfully disagree with our legal counsel, and, and judging from their performance in the past, I think I have a good position to do that. So, with that being said, though, then I don't think there's anybody that is not here to make changes and make, you know, to drop the obstacles for anybody. I don't, I don't think that that assertion fits anybody on this council, and it sure as heck doesn't fit anybody at the Civic Center. They are doing their best to meet everybody's needs at the Civic Center, and, you know, we, I'm not going to argue this point or anything. I think I made it my point that this was not a mandate, there was no lawsuit, it's not a mandate, there's no requirement for it, it's by Title II law. It is, is basically a decision that the council made with limited knowledge. Looking back on it, I, I would have probably done something differently, or maybe done a little bit more due diligence to that. I apologize, but, without being said, I'll yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
The mayor's asked me to read the following document from the Department of Justice, received today by the city of Rapid City. Justice Department reaches agreement with Rapid City, South Dakota, to improve accessibility of Civic Center, Washington. Department of Justice today announced an agreement with Rapid City, South Dakota, to remedy architectural accessibility issues that violate the American with Disabilities Act at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. This year marks the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which the Civil Rights Division plays a critical role in enforcing. Rapid City and the U.S. Department of Justice reached an agreement under Project Civic Access, the department's wide-ranging initiative to ensure that cities, towns, and counties throughout the country comply with the ADA. Under the agreement, Rapid City is required to ensure that the living parking areas around the Civic Center will comply with ADA's 2010 standards for accessible design. Agreement with Rapid City will allow people with disabilities to access county buildings such as County Whitley and Jim Nelson to attend the Black Hills Works Gala, a formal event that brings nearly 800 people from the area together to 100 people with disabilities. Upon arriving at the Civic Center, where the gala was taking place, the couple's driver found a spot that was designated as accessible, but in practice was not. It lacked the required access aisle, leaving Ms. Whitley and Mr. Nelson no room to get out of the car with their wheelchairs. After finding another spot and maneuvering through the snow, the couple then found that a side entrance at the Civic Center, as well as the door to the room where the gala was being held, were also not accessible. The size of their wheelchairs requires both double doors to be held open, a difficult task with only one staff person present. Experiences like this, however, will become a thing of the past over the next three years. Thanks to the PCA agreement, you can learn more about Ms. Whitley and Mr. Nelson's story by checking out the Justice Department's blog, where each month of 2015, the department is highlighting how PCA agreements have an impact on the everyday lives of people with disabilities. Under the agreement, the Civic Center will have the required number of designated accessible parking spaces, including van-accessible spaces. Each space will be appropriate size, have an access aisle, an accessible signage, and on the shortest accessible route to an accessible entrance. Connie and Jim's story remind us of the kinds of things people with disabilities face every day, the kinds of things that many of us take for granted, said Acting Assistant Attorney General Vinita Gupta of the Civil Rights Division. Something as simple as getting in the door should not become a Herculean defeat. Under today's agreement, in addition to getting the door, in the door, more will be done by Rapid City to make a Civic Center accessible to persons with disabilities. Agreement addresses companion seating for wheelchair users, public restrooms, interior ramps, drinking fountains, and even dressing rooms for performers with disabilities. For more information about the ADA, today's agreement, the PCA initiative, individuals may access the ADA webpage, et cetera, enclosed. Amen. Thank you.
And the agreement is, by the way, posted at ADA.gov, and it's on the front page right now of ADA.gov. We'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joel, going through this signed agreement that was linked here, is there more to it? Is there a Schedule A, B, C, or is that just in the scope of this document?
There were several attachments. They're pretty lengthy, so they aren't always linked. I tried to get them linked. I know there was some comments, Alderman Estes had pointed out that on the Civic Center website, it wasn't linked, so we made sure to get that link, but yes, there's, I think attachment A lists out the, the various barriers to accessibility they had identified and asked to be corrected, and contains timeframes for correcting those barriers.
I've got one more question. I have to agree with Ron. I think we had limited information when we went into this, but as complicated as this has been, do you have an ADA expert in your office, or do you consider yourself an ADA expert?
No, there's not an ADA expert in my office as far as, as somebody who has been trained in the Americans with Disabilities Act. Obviously, over the course of this, as you can see from the memo, I've educated myself quite a bit on the, on the topic.
It seems like a really complicated issue, and that's why I asked that question. And I'm kind of wondering why, before we went into this agreement, we didn't seek out an ADA expert on this, so we could have been a little more clear on this, and there wouldn't have been so much confusion within the public and within even some people on the council. So, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll go, thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle. Charity?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, have a question for legal counsel, if I may. And the question is, weren't we in effect given an ultimatum? I mean, we, we did not just contact the Department of Justice to say, hey, let's just settle this stuff. I mean, let, you know, let's put this on your radar and see what we can do about it. I mean, my understanding of a settlement is that they're always voluntary. You, you can't force somebody into a settlement, but there is a risk-to-reward ratio, and we were given that ultimatum, ultimatum that basically said some of our federal funding would be on the line if we did not enter into the agreement. Is that correct, or did I, did I miss something or misunderstand something?
Yes, in the conversations with the Department of Justice staff, I mean, that certainly, I mean, we can sit and, as Alderman Wyfemack said, we can sit and speculate whether or not they would have actually filed suit or withheld federal funds, but that was the threat, that that was the possibility if we did not choose to enter into the settlement agreement. I mean, once they, once they're in... agreement. I mean, once they, once their inspectors got in the front door of the Civic Center and decided that the facility was not in compliance with Title II, I don't think at that point they were just going to walk away from it if we had decided not to enter into the settlement agreement.
And do we know which types or particular components of federal funding that were in jeopardy had we not done this?
Well, you know, it specifically references Department of Justice, and that would imply our, our COPs grants that pay for a portion of police officer salaries that we have. I'm not sure how many we have outstanding right now, but that would be, when they talk about Department of Justice funding, I know that's the money we get from the Department of Justice.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
For has been yielded, and we'll go to Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know personally, being on this side of the vote that we had in November to authorize the mayor to sign the Department of Justice agreement, I, I wish I knew then what I knew not, knew, kind of know now. I probably wasn't as equipped as I wish I had been on making my vote. But as I sit here, and, and of course, things will become a lot clearer Tuesday, the eleventh, for us all, as to what happens with the, the vote on the new Civic Center. You know, and, and if it, if it doesn't pass, you know, I guess we'll all have to sit and regroup. And, and, you know, as I, as I look at the, the agreement, that, that agreement, and, and we have to remember that Department of Justice, however they got here, they only spent a couple hours in that building. All the, all the four hundred items or whatever that are in that agreement, we gave to them. It was, it was stuff that our consultants prepared for us. And, and so, so all those, all those items that we're agreeing to fix, it's, it's kind of like, I mean, we, we furnished them with those items based upon a consultant's review that we had. And, and in no way am I, do I want to prevent somebody with a disability from being able to get into our facility and use it as they should. But, you know, I look at, at it that, that if Tuesday, or Monday's vote, Tuesday's vote is not favorable, that I would highly doubt, I hope that we don't rush out and start spending the quote-stated seventy-four million dollars on this building. I, I would, I think that whatever we spend on this, it will probably, in my, just my opinion, would be a short-term deal. I, I'm going to think that down the road, somebody will come up with some type of a project that will satisfy the people. So, I guess what I was concerned about is, is by voting this, we gave up our rights to, to go back and review some things that just may not be economically feasible to fix for, for this building that was built in nineteen-seventy-seven. And as I look at the agreement in item twenty-one, I believe that we still, you know, if we are faced with actually doing the ADA fixes on this building, that we could hire somebody who has been through this before, take a look at all the items, come through, audit, audit the process with us, and give us a good idea of, you know, where, where we obviously have to spend the money and, and where we might be able to not have to spend quite so much to, to keep us out of court. Because, you know, I, I just think that anything we do to this building is, is, in relative terms, is going to be short-term. You know, whether that's five years or ten years, or whatever, however long it takes, you know, somebody to come up with a, a project if this one doesn't pass. So, that's my thoughts. I just, I just didn't want to give up our, any rights to, to to have a sit-down, because I, I think the ADA does make it clear that, that if something doesn't make economic sense for the building, or it's totally disproportionate and way out there for, for the benefit received, that, that you can, you can have those discussions. And I just, I was worried that we maybe jumped, jumped the hoop and forgave, forgave any rights to that. And I, I believe, I believe it's item number twenty-one in that agreement still allows us to have that conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Darla Drew. Darla?
Well, I guess my little spiel is kind of more anecdotal. But after I got done with the forum on Thursday night, a couple approached me and said that when they were at the rodeo for, during the stock show, they were walking up the stairs with, that have no railings on them right now. You're all familiar with that. And the lights go out, and a bunch of flashing lights come on, and there were probably a hundred people on those stairs at the time, and they were stuck until the full lights came on again. So, I think we're lucky. We haven't had a full lawsuit against us at this point. So, whether or not, you know, whatever the vote comes out to be, there are some situations that need to be fixed, and one of those is having all the lights go out before people are seated, because I think we're just setting ourselves, ourselves up for something that, that could be much worse than not getting into the building. I yield.
We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to look at this a little differently, and that is that, having been a licensed engineer and all that for years, I knew that in my profession that we're licensed and we had standards to adhere to and regulations and so forth. And I think that in the process of this evaluation, a lot of our work was based on the letter of August thirtieth, which said we do have a complaint, or they had a complaint, and that ADA prohibits discrimination against qualified individuals with disabilities. And I think that the Civic Center Board, the Civic Center Futures Committee, the city, and so forth in its effort retained a local firm that is licensed with the licensed architect and engineering firm, and they subcontracted with a firm that specialized in, I understand, ADA issues. They came up with a long list of items that were problematic and things that needed to be fixed for us to be in ADA compliance. That's my understanding. How we got there is apparently being asked by many. I think that we have found that we have a problem. We have problems. In order to be in compliance according to our consultants that are professionally trained and experienced in this matter, the items that they listed, I'm going to assume by the professional signature are the items that we need to fix. And they did an estimate, and I believe I saw an estimate that was done by the contractor at risk. Estimate was very similar. So, we have a serious expense. There's no doubt about it. And we have an obligation to fix it, and that's why we are where we are today. I don't have an analogy. I wish I had one that would help put this in a context that would help us understand it. But we have now discovered we have a problem, problems, and in order to be right with the regulations and the rules, according to our professionals, we need to do them. And I think the last two and a half, three years of work have brought us to the point where we can do that. No, it's not cheap. No, it's not easy, but it'll get us right. Thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to start out by saying that I'm not going to apologize for my vote to, to enter into the agreement, to bring this building up to code. The bottom line is, we have an obligation to our citizens to, to make this building accessible to all. We have an obligation to do that. Now, how we go about doing that is another thing, and that's what this debate is all about. And that debate will be settled this next Tuesday when the voters tell us, elected officials, what needs to be done. And that's exactly what I will do after Tuesday, and I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to thank Alderman Wiefenbach for bringing this up at the Legal and Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday. So, it hopefully brings some more public awareness to the exact, and the entire issue of the ADA compliances that we have, are faced with. And then also, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the ADA is not the only issue that we have to deal with over there. It has to do with, for me, it has to do with, in conjunction with the ADA, it has to do with marketability and the economic growth of the Civic Center. So, I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands where I'm coming from. It's not just only ADA, but it includes the other two portions of the footstool that needs to be addressed. I've heard a lot of comments about the, the ADA issues and some, some regulations cited off of this, and I did go back and have the opportunity to read that over. And at that point, I wanted to thank our counsel, Joel Landine, for bringing forward the, the letter or memorandum that I had the opportunity to read over. There's a lot of information within that memorandum that has to do with the ADA, just specifically the ADA issues that were brought up by Alderman With, with that said, there, I, I want to say that some of the, some of the comments that I was hearing is it has a lot to do with parking outside. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands it's not just the parking. It also includes the, the main arena. The, the kitchen area is also got, got some issues, and then the landings or the, the floor outside of the arena has some issues that need to be dealt with. And the website got mine, it has got the all four hundred issue, four hundred and two issues cited on there. And the, there's also a summary for the people that want to take a look at it for just the ADA issues that, that are on the website. And if you'll go to the January thirteenth, two thousand thirteen links, you'll see the summary of that. So, and, and I will concur with Alderman Laurenti that I will not apologize for my vote for last November either. I think it was a good vote. I, I think everybody is having second thoughts about it because of various reasons, but I know I'm not, because I believe very strongly that the ADA issues have to be addressed. Whether we have a yes or a no vote on the Civic Center, those must be addressed in some fashion. And it's not going to be like November eleventh, we've got a plan. There isn't any. So, it will take some more study and some more, some more digging into the, all the problems that we have. And, and by the time you get, taking a look at all the ADA issues, we need to take a look at also all the building code violations, because that's in addition to that. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands there's a larger picture in here than just the ADA issues. And that's why I'm taking a look at more to this, and, and I call it the three-legged footstool. It has to do with the Civic Center. So, we need that balance. With that, Mayor, thank you. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Alderman Ron Wiefenbach.
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't going to get into this, but the fact of the matter is, is like, there, there's laws that are made, and there's punishments for those laws, and they have ranges. If you do this, this could happen. This is exactly what it is. There's no, I mean, to say that we were going to get sued is speculation at best. The fact of the matter is, the building's been open since seventy-seven. The fact of the matter is, there's nobody here trying to skirt the ADA issues. That's the point that bugs the heck out of me, because all of a sudden now, everybody comes up with all these people that have problems. It's like, why haven't you addressed them? A simple phone call to the people at the Civic Center, and they'll address them. They will help these particular people that are having the obstacles today. And for people to say this or that, and then come up here twenty-five, thirty years later and say, oh, this person, that and that. I mean, they're, those people at the Civic Center, I'm telling you, are more than happy to help people. And I understand we got to address these, but this agreement ties our hands to do a specific amount of improvement in a specific amount of time. Right now, the Vision Fund has been empty. Previous councils did a pay-as-you-go on the Vision Fund to provide money for things like this. It's exactly what it's for. But with this agreement is, with the point I was making out, is we speculated that we were going to get sued. We can speculate we're going to get sued on anything. I mean, we could get sued for whatever the case may be. And as, as people have seen in our city, our track record of winning those lawsuits aren't so great. That's the reality of it. But the fact of the matter is to speculate that someone's going to sue us because the law states something. And talking about the, the engineers that did the, the ADA compliance issues through the Civic Center, there's no doubt. If you read the report, which blows me away that people aren't reading this stuff, that the, the architect talks about, the engineer talks about it, and he says, you're not safe harbor. Well, there's a difference between safe harbor and existing buildings. The fact of the matter is, the building was built in seventy-seven. Is it out of code? Absolutely. It absolutely is. That's not a dispute, and nobody's going to dispute that. And nobody's saying that we're not going to address those ob, obstacles. But the fact of the matter is, we signed an agreement that gives us a timeline now that says you got to have this done in this specific amount of time. That's where I have the heartburn. And the heartburn was not having the full information, and I rely on people to give me, and it won't happen again. Well, I shouldn't say it won't happen again. I hope it doesn't happen again. And the fact of the matter is, if we have immediate issues that we can resolve, let's resolve them. Let's resolve them today. These people with the parking issues, they got to understand, when you go down there and you have a handicap van, and the reason I know this is because I looked into it. If there's, if there's a handicap van accessible parking, and you're not a handicap van, why are you parking there? Because that handicap van, guy comes up and he can't park there. He can't park there because he can't flip his ramp open. And the, and that van space is being used by somebody who doesn't have that necessity. There's all different levels of this stuff. That's why painting a picture, broad picture, that thinking that you throw all this money at something and it's going to fix it, you're wrong. Engineers started designing buildings. They made the buildings, and then they said, okay, we're going to put the sidewalks in later. You know why? Because they realize where people walk. The fact of the matter is, if you don't live as, as an ADA person, you can't understand them. I agree with that. You have to develop a level of empathy, and you have to put yourself in their spot. So, if you know something that's happening, make the Civic Center aware of it. Tell them. They'll be more than happy to help you at this point, especially as we're in between. What bugs me is, everybody comes up with all these things, and we haven't helped these people that are having these troubles. We know it in our heads, but we don't go down and tell them, hey, this guy needs this, or this guy needs that. We're a small enough city that we can still do that. And that's my point. We didn't need to tie our hands. It wouldn't, I mean, the vote, up or down, doesn't make a difference. The fact of the matter is, we've tied our hands, and the people will vote whether they want to spend a hundred and eighty million dollars or not. That's what they're voting on. They're not voting on whether we're going to address ADA or not. That's not the issue. So, I appreciate giving me the opportunity to speak my mind. Thank you.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
I'll come to him in a minute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm just going to come to the defense of, of staff a little bit. Just that, one thing I know about lawyers is they love to argue, and given a chance, they love to go to trial. But the good lawyers will tell you when you're, you got a chance of losing, and the risks are high. So, you know, compromise is always a good thing to do, I think. And I definitely think that Joel, for my money, told us, you know, this, there's a chance you're going to lose here, and the longer we tie this up, it's going to cost the city money, and the longer we tie it up, the longer, higher the construction costs are going to go. These problems aren't going to go away. Department of Justice knows about the problems, regardless of whether or not we all want to agree on whether or not there are problems. Well, I think most of us do, but the fact of the matter is, I think, you know, a good lawyer will tell you that you got a good chance of losing, or you don't. But they can never know what a jury's going to do, or a court's going to rule. And I think that, I, I voted based upon that information. I, I think that's was perfectly fine information. I think it was what, the prudent thing to do from his standpoint. Like I said, he, he gets paid either way, but arguing is something most, most attorneys like to do. Litigating things, you know, they're difficult. That's kind of the challenge they, they like to have. And so, for my money, I, I appreciate the information I got and the, you know, straight-up truth. You know, there's a chance you're going to lose. So, I'm like, well, what do I want to do? I want to risk going to court again and losing, spending more taxpayer money. And then when we do lose, we have to go by fixing it anyway, and it's going to be more expensive later, because the construction costs are doing nothing but going up. So, that was my, my, I based my vote upon that, and I think that we had sounded legal advice, in my opinion, and I think that's just something that needs to be said. Thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, I, my good friend Richie here to my right said something, and I just, I'm not sure I a hundred percent agree with him. He mentioned that the Civic Center has a list of, on the building code side, that it has a list of code violations. And I don't think that's true. I think that if that, if it actually had that many dollars with the code violations, it'd be shut down. I, I think what that, on the code side is, is that if it was built today, a lot of things would be built differently. And to bring, and to bring those items up to today's code, that, that's what it would cost. I mean, we, we change, we adopt new codes almost annually. I mean, a house that was built two years ago doesn't meet today's code, but that doesn't mean the house has a code violation. And I just think that that's, I might be splitting hairs, but I just don't think we want people to think that, that our Civic Center, because we shut buildings down. We make people not inhabit buildings that actually have code viol- We make people not inhabit buildings that actually have code violations on occasion. So I believe, you know, we have the ADA side of this equation, we have the code side. And the ADA side, I think we have a list of stuff that says, you know what, if you do everything to bring that thing up to ADA, this is what it'll cost. And then we have the code side and it says, if you're going to change these systems and bring it up to today's code, this is what it's going to cost. So that's my, I yield. Thanks.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
I do believe we can get clarification from either our Building Inspection Department or our attorney that if we do begin significant remodeling for ADA, that we're going to hit some need requirements to bring up to code. I just want to comment and tie in with the analysis that was done by our professional firms on the ADA issues within our facility. And comments that were made earlier, we could go in and fix this and fix that. What bothers me about that is there's not just one or two, there's not just a few, there's a lot. An issue that we could get into is if we start fixing one, later we end up tearing it out to do something else. That bothers me. And this is a project that looks at the total needs and addresses them in one project, which I like so we know we're going to be right. Give me an example, if we were to go in and build parking that was needed today or coded today, it may be gone if we add onto the building. I'm just thinking that we're way better off with a project where we do it right as our engineers and our architects have recommended. Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to point out to my friend Alderman Estes that in the May 2013, what I'm referring to is a building code violation, and it is a report completed by the TSP Group. And there's, I haven't got the number of pages right handy in front of me, but it identifies several other things in addition to the ADA study, which was done by others. And TSP did all of the code, started to address the code issues on there. So it is on the website, GotMine.com.
We do have a motion on the floor to acknowledge any further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for the good and amicable discussion. We are now on item number 56. This was an item that was put on the agenda at the beginning of the council meeting. A member of the public, and we'll just, for lack of better definition, we'll just call this the Concerns Over Electioneering, if that's okay. And we'll go to whoever on the council would like to speak. We have nobody currently in queue. We do now. Alderman Charity Doyle.
First, I have a question. Since this item was added after general public comment, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to it, but they didn't have an opportunity since it was added. If you wanted to reopen that before we got rolling or just take it in the form of, you know, if somebody's jumping up and down in their seat.
We'll do it this way. If there's any, if anybody disagrees with the chair on this, you can certainly object. We don't have a situation like this very often, but it does happen once in a while. So what we'll do is we'll open public comment for, since this is added to the agenda, we'll open public comment for anyone who has not already brought in their public comments or made their public comments on this item. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on, would like to speak on item 56 now that it's been added to the agenda? Okay. Why don't you come to the podium and identify yourself? And the floor is yours. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, if they could fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Charlene to my right, to your left.
Sure.
No, you don't, that's fine. Go ahead and...
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Jordan Mason, and I do appreciate Mayor Jerry Munson coming before us and actually presenting some of this. I do actually mostly have a question and a concern after seeing some of this evidence, but if, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it is the city finance officer that oversees elections. Or is that not the case? Who actually oversees it?
We're not going to get into a back and forth.
That's fair. My concern is, is with the evidence that has actually been presented of, you know, actively campaigning, what appears to be using city email, I would just ask that our council take into consideration what sort of involvement into the election that particular person that sent out the email has. Because that is a bit concerning and I frankly would cast a doubt. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker request forms on item 56? We'll go to Linda Raby. No, that's fine.
I can't if you need to. Well, we'll just address, pardon, I'm Linda Raby with the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll just address one issue of it. I think the law, I'm not that familiar with some of the electoral laws, but I think the law was there if somebody was within 100 yards to intimidate somebody or to encourage somebody. Well, there was nobody in the area. The two ladies that had taken the George Washington head had done it just as a fun thing to do, had nothing to do with trying to sway votes. And I'm thinking it was, as soon as we found out that it wasn't legal, we took it down immediately from all of our websites. So you just need to know that it was not done with a spirit and intent that people are saying it was done.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item 56? Last call, last call? Public comment is now closed on item 56. We'll now come back to the council. And Alderman Charity Doyle, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you opening that back up for folks. You know, I have a lot of the gentlemen from the opposition in my cell phone and have consulted with them over the years. I mean, we've had great relationships over the years. And I find it interesting that, you know, picking up the phone and calling me and asking questions maybe didn't even occur. You know, things like civil discourse and information gathering and that, that way of just treating people with respect and saying, hey, let me dial you up and ask you a question. I saw this. What was really behind it? Because, you know, pictures don't talk. We can make up words, certainly, but they don't talk. And, you know, just those days seem to be over. You know, we don't talk to our neighbors anymore. We don't treat people with respect anymore. We don't give them the benefit of the doubt. We like to rush to judgment. And had certain individuals not rushed to judgment and assumptions and instead asked questions, they would have learned, for instance, that I was at the county administration building that day casting my vote, alone, I might add. And as I was walking out, George Washington and his entourage walked in and asked for a couple of photos. Not a big deal in my book. You know, we can nickel and diamond and argue points and do that, but I just have to wonder what's really behind it. If we were on the same side of an argument, would that have happened? Is this just because we have different views on the expansion of the Civic Center? Is that what it boils down to? I mean, is that what this has come to? You know, and I think about the example that's being set. We had some youth in the audience this evening. We've had youth involved in the Civic Center issue. And, you know, getting them engaged is amazing, and they're staying engaged. And I, is this the legacy we're leaving them? I mean, it makes me sad. It really does. You know, is this what the political process is supposed to be? Is this leadership where we just attack and level innuendo instead of coming together and saying, hey, you know, maybe you want to take a look at that? There's good people on both sides of this argument. I believe that, and I'll continue to believe that no matter what happens March 10th. But I think something that people need to be made aware of is how do others view us outside of our city? When you go to Pierre, when you go to Sioux Falls, you hear things, that outside looking in. And it's not something to be proud of, what they see on the headlines. And I would just hope that people understand that those headlines hurt the entire community. It's not fair. It's not fair to anybody. It's not fair to what we're trying to accomplish here. It's not fair to the youth. It's not fair to the good people on any side of any argument or issue or ballot question or whatever, any place to level these kinds of, you know, attacks and silly games. It doesn't have to be that way, and I think we can do better. I yield.
Alderman Jerry Wright.
I think the community is kind of sliding to a low in politics on this issue, and it's sad because we should be discussing the issues and merits and not character assassination and the tax. But I would just ask the attorney with these things, is there anything that we should do other than acknowledge, is there anything that, any legal action, anything that should be done or what? Any legal advice to the council? Otherwise, I would make suggestions we acknowledge and move on.
Thank you, Mayor. The best of a person who made a complaint regarding the picture today, I did forward it to the state's attorney's office and the attorney general's office. I also sent a message to the chamber and said, you know, the rule is 100 feet from the door for any campaigning. And to Alderman Doyle, they immediately acknowledged that and said that was mistaken, they would not do that again this afternoon. And I received an email from Jay Alderman at the state's attorney's office and also to the complainant, and said that he had reviewed it, he had talked to the county auditor, and that in these situations that generally when somebody has been, say, closer than 100 feet campaigning, it has been handled by giving that person a verbal warning to not be 100 feet. And that has generally been the end of it. So as far as Jay Alderman was concerned, that my action of notifying them of that and their acknowledgement of it was appropriate action and that he was not planning to take any further action on this subject. So I think the county has been, and the state's attorney have been made aware of it, and they have indicated that no further action in their view is required.
Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom. We do not have a motion.
Thank you, room mayor. If I may, make that motion to acknowledge.
A motion by Nordstrom and a second by Estes to acknowledge. And Richie, you still have the floor if you want it.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think our city attorney, Mr. Landine, has addressed most of the questions that I had, but I do want to point out one other topic that was brought up this evening was the email that was sent out by staff. And my opinion is that that should be dealt by the mayor, dealt with by the mayor. If there's any disciplinary action to be conducted, that would be handled in a confidential manner. And that's my opinion. And if there needs to be any further action on it, then that is between the staff and the mayor because he is, to me, is like the CEO and he's the guy that does the answering or the accountability. The only other thing that I wanted to address is that one of the things that I heard over and over again was that some of these things were done in the dark and midnight. And I know I was one of the people that raised my hand acknowledging that I did vote on this, and I was in the room when that took place.
Mr. Mayor?
Richie, we're talking about item 56, the concerns raised by a citizen. We're not, we're no longer talking about the ADA settlement.
Yeah, I think, maybe I misread it, but I thought former Mayor Munson brought up some violations within, on one of the screens that he pointed up. And then I just wanted to address that one point. Is that these items were not in the middle of the night. They were discussed openly in the public forums. And the, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we did discuss those items in the public format. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go to Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I guess since I heard what I needed to hear from Attorney Joel, that he turned it over and got the opinion from the state's attorney, that's good with me. You know, I got friends and relatives on both sides of this, and having served up here with Alderwoman Doyle, she's passionate about this, she's excited about it, you know, and I, and being at a special election, I guess I, if it hadn't have been brought up tonight, I would have, the election laws and the rules to follow would have been probably something I'd have never thought about. You know, I know we have city elections coming up, and I kind of think about that, but this being a special deal, I, you know, I appreciate the passion on both sides. I appreciate Alderwoman Doyle's enthusiasm in trying to sell her point of view, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. We now deem it pertinent to go to Alderman Ron Weifembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too appreciate everyone's passion, and I appreciate Mr. Munson bringing it forward to the council who can actually look at it, make a decision on it. But there was something said here earlier about raising the question. As a public official in my ward, that one of the things I do have is a level of integrity with my citizens, and I have a level of responsibility and duty. And when this first came to my attention, I did what I was supposed to do. I emailed my mayor and my city attorney. It wasn't even before the day was over that I was accused of undermining city employees. That's what happens when you do the right thing. And that's what I did. And there is no, not one city employee in this city that I would undermine. And anybody that's worked with me that knows me knows that's the truth. So I appreciate Mr. Munson bringing it forward and have it out on the table for Alderman Doyle because she is my cohort, and she has worked with me in Ward One, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate her enthusiasm as I appreciate the opposing's enthusiasm. But I understand how things have to be approached, and I'm very comfortable with the fact that the position that the mayor or the city attorney takes, because they have to defend those positions, not me. I'm not employees' bosses. But as Alderman Estes had mentioned, when you get caught up in enthusiasm, sometimes you make mistakes. I'm driving down the road going 45 into 30, cop pulls me over. You think he's going to listen to me and say, oh, you made a mistake? No. He's going to probably give me a ticket or give me a warning, one or the other. He's not going to just let me walk away, but he's going to remind me, there's rules. And there's rules for both sides of the people. And I think we can all respect that. And I can honestly say from my heart that I know Alderman Doyle did not intentionally electioneering. It happened. She's obviously wanted to bring it to light tonight by making a motion to put it on the agenda, and I appreciate that. But I also appreciate the fact that Mr. Munson brought it forward because then people can see, people that had a conversation about me that didn't have the ability to call me, but said I would undermine an employee, which I would never do, not in a million years. My confidence was undermined because I did the right thing. So I appreciate bringing it forward, making it out in the open so we can all move on with our life. So if there was a mistake made, we can all live with that. Whatever the appropriate punishment is, I'm sure that Alderman Doyle or anybody else that was involved would have no problem stepping up and saying, you know what, I'll handle that. I think they will do that. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Linda, I have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind. And I feel really dumb, but the little Mount Rushmore guy, what's his name?
It's George Washington. Are you kidding me?
Well, whatever he is. And who?
Hey, it's George.
Okay. Well, the head's so big, I just, you know. Hey, hey. Can I ask you, who pays his salary? Who is he paid by?
George?
Yeah, George.
It was one of our employees. We just thought it would be fun. It was kind of a cute little, but we really did truly believe it was 30, I think we thought it was 30 feet. Isn't that what we? Yeah, we had no idea it was 100. So that was our bad. We acknowledged that. Yeah, and it was over the noon hour. It was a couple of our employees that were going to vote over the noon hour, and they thought it would be fun to do this and take a picture. And poor Charity, she's the one that got pulled in. It was our employees that were doing it. Charity didn't even know they were there until all of a sudden they say, come take a picture with us, just thinking it would be fun. So it was a noon hour. It was their own deal.
You know, I'm just, I'm a little worried that this is a violation of election law. You know, I'm a little bit worried about that. I don't think Charity did it intentionally. I think it was something that was done that was stupid. But, you know, I do remember a gentleman that sat on this council a couple of years ago that did something stupid too and was crucified. So I just, I have a problem with this. I have a problem that we can just blow off something being so stupid for one person, but for another person, it's a huge violation. And I just really have an issue with that. So anyway, thank you.
We did apologize. We did take it down.
And I remember, if I remember right, I think he did too. But you know what? People do stupid things sometimes. People do stupid things sometimes. And, you know, and I, like I said, I don't think Charity did this intentionally. And I just, I, where, where does it end? I mean, we, we should know the law. We should know what we can and we can't do. I know that, I know you can't election within a hundred feet of a polling place, you know, I know. And maybe that has to do with being asked to help run people off when I work for the